Are you ready to go?
Yep.
All right.
Oops, hold on.
Good evening. This meeting of the Jefferson County Board will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Okay, we have 28 present and two absent.
Thank you. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Waymire, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're invited to remain standing for a moment to contemplate our service to the public. Thank you. We're in compliance with open meeting law?
We are, Mr. Chair.
Next is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like the order of the agenda altered in any way? Okay, we'll proceed as printed. Next is approval of the April 16th, 2019 meeting minutes. Supervisor Renaud, please.
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Now, we have a special order of business, a presentation on the Wisconsin Health Community's Gold Designation Award. Gail Scott, Jefferson County Health Department, Bridget Monahan, and Tracy Wilson from Ford Healthcare, and I understand we have a number of other individuals who've been integral to us receiving this award here this evening as well.
Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to do this. As you recall, there was a letter written from the Board of Health that explained this award somewhat, but just to remind you, and again, my name is Gail Scott. I'm Director of the Health Department. Bridget Monahan from Ford Healthcare could not be here tonight, but Tracy Wilson is here from Ford Healthcare. Jefferson County was awarded the Wisconsin Healthy Community Gold Award. This award is from the UW-Madison School of Medicine and Public Health in the Population Health Institute, and it's called the MATCH Program, which means Mobilizing Action Towards Community Health. And this is funded through the Wisconsin Partnership Program. So that's a really long, lots of information on where we got the award. When Ford Healthcare, Tracy and Bridget and I first discussed about writing for this award, we were saying, should we get gold, go for gold, silver, or bronze, with gold being the best, of course? And we said, heck yeah, we're going for the gold. And we knew that we had enough programs and enough collaboration and enough great, great partners that we could get the gold award. And Tracy was instrumental in actually putting words to paper, although she did have help from all of the partners that I will call upon today, also assisted in writing that award. So first, I think I'll introduce everybody, and then I'll have Tracy give you more information. We have Craig Holler, and he is from our Alcohol and Drug Treatment Courts. And Barb Morrison-Gudgen, she is the Director of the Community Dental Clinic. Emmy Reiner, she is the Chair of the Drug Free Coalition in Jefferson County. Joe Namor, you know him as our Parks Director, and Kathy Colley, our Human Services Director. So now Tracy is going to go over what programs that we wrote for and that we received this award. And on the table, there are two documents that you're welcome to take. There's a one-sheeter, that's kind of the Cliff Notes, and then there's the publication from Ford Healthcare with an article in there. And there's also billboards around the county, and Tracy's going to tell you about another initiative.
Thank you. Excuse me. So I will just highlight that in order for us to receive this gold award for Jefferson County, we had to submit a minimum of eight evidence-based practices that we worked on collaboratively with different partners throughout the county. So partnerships, collaboration, pooling resources, and health equity were all really important components that you needed to show within the different initiatives. We ended up submitting 10 initiatives. We had more to choose from, which is really great and an excellent accomplishment for Jefferson County. But the initiatives that we highlighted in the application included the many healthy community coalitions that we have around Jefferson County that have helped to complete initiatives related to nutrition and physical activity around the county. Also, the Jefferson County Alcohol Treatment Court and Drug Treatment Court, the Jefferson County Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan, also the Rock River Free Clinic, the Community Dental Clinic, including the Seal a Smile Program, the Behavioral Health Primary Care Integration that Ford Healthcare does within our clinics, also computerized physician order entry in the electronic medical records that Ford Healthcare does as well. Additional programs were the Proper Drug Disposal Program, the Jefferson County Bike Way Pedestrian Way Master Plan, and the NoOxone Education and Distribution Program through the Jefferson County Drug Free Coalition. So those were the 10 initiatives. You can read a little bit more about it in the Community Benefit Report that we provided for you. And so it was a lot of work and a lot of people that helped to write the application and put this together. And Jefferson County was one of four counties in the state of all those who applied that received the gold status. And so La Crosse, Eau Claire area, and then Wood County were the others that received gold status. So it's a huge accomplishment related to health and wellness and helping us to be the healthiest community in Wisconsin. So Ford Healthcare has purchased a number of signs. It's upside down. So this is the logo. We will be giving Jefferson County four signs, and if more want to be purchased and put up, we can certainly work with the county. And then we'll also be providing two signs to six different communities within Jefferson County. So we hope to have these distributed around the county because we're very proud of the achievement. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, picture time. And while they're doing that, we'll move along to our next agenda item, is a presentation on the Strategic Plan Update. We have Mr. Waymire here with us, as always, and we also have our Strategic Plan Facilitator, Diane Chamnus from the Chamnus Group.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight is an update. So the course of the last few months, the Executive Committee has reopened up the Strategic Plan. When we talked about this last year in the process, we all realized that this was going to be a dynamic process. There's going to be new inputs that came in, and looked at the necessity of potentially changing what their plan is. And so tonight is kind of an update of the homework that the Executive Committee has had, with input from staff, other folks within the communities, and what Diane helped put together based on those comments back. So tonight's, to get information, there's going to be opportunities in the future, so there's feedback from the Board and others as this goes forward in terms of do we accept these new recommendations going forward? So we move forward from there. So as we look at our guidelines slash parameters, these are kind of some of the enabling things that we started with from day one. So a lot of the idea was that the goals were going to be plain language. Are we, do we have transparency of what we're trying to say to get the outcomes we're trying to achieve? At some point, we're going to have a detailed action plan. We had in the original plan, and quite honestly, we got a lot of those things moving, but that's to help push the action. That was one of the other key things when we started the strategic planning process is we wanted to ensure there's an action plan to execute those goals. The Board designated the Executive Committee oversee this process, and there's been periodic updates, and this is more than just a periodic update that you'll be seeing here shortly. And then the committee spent a lot of time talking about how do we integrate some of the other plans that we're working on? So we kicked off the comprehensive plan as an example. We realized that's going to give a lot more feedback as we look at how does that align with the strategic plan? And that might change, cause changes in the future to the strategic plan as well, as those inputs from community members come forward. But it's also the integration with the prior-based budgeting. Staff took a lot of time as we looked at the vision of the county and how do we integrate it? Our Finance Committee and the Board last December approved that matrix that we put together that really integrated the strategic plan visions and how that applies to our budgetary process, and that we're going to continue to moderate going forward. And again, this is going to be flexible and dynamic. So why are we updating this plan already? Well, first bullet, I'm not going to beat that up too much, but we meant this plan to be dynamic and change based on what's going on outside. But there's also a lot of questions and conversations. So did the original goals that we developed, did that really help execute the vision and mission we were trying to achieve? Well, we looked at some of those goals. I think we had over 11 goals with 76 strategies behind it. We actually asked ourselves, what do we mean by that? And so we wanted to really look at, is it making sense what we're trying to do and achieve the vision and mission that the county's trying to carry out? Were these goals strategic or are they tactful? In some cases, an example, one thing was we're going to do a comprehensive plan. Well, guess what? We're doing a comprehensive plan, achieve, but that was more of a tactful approach to getting things done. So again, we want to push it to that visionary 10,000-foot level with some of these comments. Did we need to clarify these goals? Do you need to read a little bit better so everyone outside this boundary here who do this stuff in databases understand what we're trying to achieve and clarify so they can give feedback back to you as elected officials? Will stakeholders understand what we're trying to say? And what was missing? So an example of what was missing, there's two things that jumped out to the group right away. One was public safety, and one was more relevant to our parks, specifically the Glacial Heritage Area. Those are some items that jumped out, the Executive Committee went through this process. And then we also look, is the vision valid? Are the goals valid? And how do we integrate this with this comp plan? So where we were? This is a slide that we presented last year. Again, we talked about the future, which is our vision, the process we went through, we validated the old mission statement, we developed these guiding principles or values, and then we looked at developing 10 goals. We added one for workforce, and we had 76 strategies. And this is our guiding principles. Those don't change, and by the way, that's in the handout that you do have, the mission, vision, and guiding principles, along with new goals are in there. These do not change, or not being recommended to be changed. And then we had these 11 goals, and we're not going to go through each one because you've read them before. So new recommendations. So the mission, we're saying that should stay the same. The mission is supposed to be carry on forever. This is what took place in the previous strategic planning process with Professor Grebel, and it was a very valid mission of what we're trying to do. Vision. This was developed in anticipation of being on the IQ corridor and what would happen as we look at growth and the balanced growth within that area. So this potential might change depending on how we accept the goals. Does that tweak that a little bit as we look ahead? Guiding principles unchanged, and then goals is where we primary focused on. So Goal One is kind of our really overarching goal, and that's dealing with growth, but a lot of conversation, what does that mean? Because it really is a conversation of the balanced growth, and how do we look at the growth between the urban and rural areas of the county? How do we balance between Milwaukee and Madison? And so this was just a data point that we used, but this is one that we wish some feedback on. Does it make sense that we're trying to keep pace with the average growth within the state of Wisconsin? And my annual report, I'm going to talk through that a little bit later on. But we're focusing on the variety of things that make Jefferson County what it is. So we're looking at our business, our agriculture, the need for affordable housing, workforce so we can keep our folks employed, along with the education process. Education was actually underneath a different goal, and we talked about the overarching needs of the county. We moved it up to Goal One recently. As we look at education, this also drives home not just the typical things that we think about for K through 12, but we do a lot with birth to three, so this encompasses some of those original goals such as every child thrives and retalk play that Human Services Health Department, numerous stakeholders are working on to this day. Goal Two, you see these two items, and these come up quite a bit. Human Services, we talked about transportation again this morning. We've made some efforts there as we brought a mobility manager, but this is more than just talking about how do we coordinate rides, it's how do we look at the infrastructure, how do we use multi-molder systems? And that's been a very hot topic in numerous conversations, so again, that's a high priority in terms of a goal. And then infrastructure. So a lot of it was focused in on our facilities, but also looking at our road projects, but also the infrastructure of future broadband. You'll see, and throughout the document, there's an emphasis on broadband because that was brought forward by the Executive Committee. Goal Three is where we added some of those items that we thought were missing. Again, particularly looking at public safety and health and wellness, paying attention to the group you just saw up here, quite honestly, in terms of what they're doing to promote. If you did not realize, that designation was actually in the outdoor comprehensive plan for the parks, and it noted how much we jumped in the last few years for our health indication. I think it's like 20 spots in terms of what we've done. And again, that's a collaborative team effort, and that's why we want to make sure that was called out here in our goals, keep that going. Goal Four, marketing communications. How are we talking about the awareness of what Jefferson County is? This was probably one of the biggest things when Diane went back out to talk to stakeholders internally and externally to the organization that we need to trumpet what goes on here more. So what you just saw tonight, how do we trumpet that more? How do we find better ways to market what's going on? How do you talk about the quality of life? How do you talk about it's a safe place to live and all the programs that we have? Again, emphasize, we can trumpet ourselves more. We do some great things here. Intergovernmental relations continues to be a topic, and you heard a lot about collaboration just before, and you can hear about it more later on tonight. But it's an effort as we look at our other governing bodies, both locally and at the state level, how to cooperate more. And then really, it's also not just from a service standpoint, but how do we look at from a planning standpoint? So one key topic we talked about in the comprehensive plan we asked for is for our consultants to sit down with all our communities to get what is their vision long-term from a planning standpoint, and how does integrate to the growth and protection of our resources in farmland? And then finally, Goal Five. I call this the quality of life goal in many ways, and you look at some aspirational ideas upfront. It talks about being a place to live, work, and play, and what does that all mean to the folks who are here and who may come to visit here? Recently, our tourism numbers were put out there, and we increased by a nice chunk of change, but we're still in that top 25. So what does it take to move us even more? Those are examples of aspirational aspects we can have moving forward, but also creating that quality of life. There's a lot of things that are built in there. One thing when we looked at these goals, if you go back to those original 11 goals, almost every concept that was talked about in those discussions, plus those ones we missed, haven't incorporated into these five goals. And the goal was, the intent behind that was to make it more clarity and more of a narrative of what we're trying to achieve. We felt as we stepped back and looked at those 11 goals and how it was written, it didn't tell the story. And we talk a lot about how do we tell the story of what we do here on a day-to-day basis, both to our internal stakeholders, but to our external stakeholders. And so that's probably the reason this narrative was put in the fashion it was. So our next steps. So we know this is new to many here, but we've had some of you visit the Executive Committee. I'll be reviewing this with department heads more tomorrow as well, but there's an opportunity to take a look at this, ask questions of Executive Committees, myself, other staff. They are meeting on May 30th to talk about this and more, so that's the opportunity. If you think there needs to be tweaks made, please do. I've already gotten one sent to me via email, so that's great. The intent is to look at this more at the County Board on June 11th, potentially for adoption. That's not a hard, unfast date, so if there's more time needed so folks can look at it, get feedback and validation of that, that is encouraged. We're also looking at ongoing feedback. So as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan is kicking off. We actually had our first steering committee, and we're getting in the process to release the public survey, along with doing regional meetings. We've talked with our consultants in some ways, how do we get some of the information to validate this as well, to ensure that those plans align and get feedback, maybe some of this needs to change as well to get out into the community. And then defining measurables. One thing we've talked about is what are some of those measurables we want to measure on a routine basis? One thing is the ALIS data. So some may have heard of that before. It's been a hot topic as these reports have come out. But ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. So basically, it's an analysis of what it costs for households to live. They're above federal property level, but what does it take to live within the county that you're home to? And you'll be surprised at what those costs are and how many we have. And then the other thing is just looking at state data. So that's one thing. As we measure it, it's not just a matter of we finish the task, but it's also are we achieving the outcomes that we desire to achieve? So status, you'll see a list of a lot of things going on. We talked a lot about the comp plan is going on, including the comp plan behind the intergovernmental cooperation is a component of housing and transportation. We have identified additional resources for more work on those topics if needed. Specifically, housing, affordable housing primarily has become a very hot topic on numerous levels. Transportation plan, we talked a little bit, that Human Services was able to get federal dollars for a mobility manager. They currently are looking at gap analysis, they have identified some temporary routes to help with some transportation needs, but that's just a small piece of the puzzle, and there's a lot more to go on there. Shared services, collaboration. We're continuing to work with our municipal partners. We're looking at engaging the policy forum to help us with those discussions, and what does that mean as we look at better ways to serve the public in the future? Broadband, obviously, you are aware of where that's heading and comments back, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done in that front of the best way to provide those services in the future. We spent a lot of time on prior-based budgeting this last year, and then other programs that folks are working on. Every Child Thrives is a big one that has a lot of things. Farm technology of days, I put that out there because there's a lot of work going on by a lot of staff, but what a prime opportunity to market the county and what we're doing, both from a business and agricultural standpoint. So again, this is, tonight is meant as an initial presentation of what the Executive Committee developed with feedback to gauge ideas and in conversations. So please feel free in the future to reach out to one of those members. Please come to the May 30th meeting if you have thoughts of what might need to be tweaked a little bit, or look at future dates for feedback via email and other ideas. So, Mr. Chair, any other things that I missed or comments?
No, you covered it well, thank you. Okay, now to communications.
Okay, you have the Treasurers Report on your desk, which is on this green sheet of paper. And then you also have appointments by the County Board Chair, Olivia Alt, Tourism Representative to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, which is on page one. And the Zoning Committee is giving a Notice of Public Hearing, which is May 16th of 2019, and that is on pages two and three.
Okay, thank you. Now we have public comment. And our first registrant is Pastor Bob from Watertown, Wisconsin. We're going to be presenting gift to our Sheriff's Office.
All right, thank you. I'm Bob Loggins. I serve as the pastor at Calvary Baptist Church in Watertown, and I just want to, first of all, thank you for your participation in Blue and White Sunday. For the last 23 years, Calvary Baptist Church has taken one Sunday each year to honor the men and women who serve in our law enforcement community. We've called that special Sunday a Blue and White Sunday, and many of you have attended our Blue and White Sunday. And again, we just want to say thank you so much for doing that. Appreciation to our law enforcement officials and recognition of their importance in our community is really what we've endeavored to do with our Blue and White Sunday. And so each year, we choose a law enforcement agency to do something special for them. This year, we chose the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Milbrath, along with Chief Deputy Parker, have been very supportive of our Blue and White Sunday. And in lieu of gifts for our guests, what we do is we take an offering, and this year we purchased, we took an offering for the purchase of a mobile identification device for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. This unit will enable officers to scan fingerprints on-site, facilitating criminal apprehension and protection of the victims. And so on the behalf of Calvary Baptist Church's Blue and White Sunday, it is my pleasure to present to Chief Deputy Parker a check for $1,500 for the purchase of this device.
Thank you.
And I would just, I would just like to take a second to thank Pastor Bob and the church for doing this. Not only is it a special opportunity for us to do work out in the field and expedite the services that we provide to the community, but it also is an opportunity on Sunday when we have the Blue and White Sunday that our men and women get to spend in a special time in fellowship and worship, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Our next registrant, I can't read his name, but I remember his face, sir? Yeah?
I'm John Tyler from Lake Mills. I'm concerned with the gerrymandering and wanting to have fair legislative maps. I moved here from Keokwak, Iowa, and people in Iowa are really happy to have fair maps for their districts. Moving back here, I wondered what happened about the clean government and just government and fair government where the maps would be fair to both parties and the people in them, and that's not happening. Look at Jefferson's not a part of my district. Watertown, Waterloo is just crazy. It's like Wisconsin's trying to imitate Illinois, and there are crazy maps that they're gerrymandering. And I think we can do better than Illinois. I want both parties to strive to get me to vote for them and for the same for you and every citizen, but for it to be a fair election, and that has to be based on fair maps. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Anita Martin of Lake Mills. Going to pass, thank you. And then next is Catherine Clyber of Waterloo.
Hi, I'm Catherine Clyber. I live in Waterloo. I've been working on the health effects of radio frequency radiation, which is emitted by wireless technology for about 17 years now, after finding out that my health was affected by radio frequency exposure. And in the past few months, the County Board passed two resolutions that are detrimental to Jefferson County. The first detrimental resolution resulted in the adoption of the broadband forward ordinances. The telecommunications industry is motivated by profits above all else, just like other industries that have brought us past public health disasters: lead paint, asbestos, tobacco, radium. So adopting a resolution that gives up all the county's remaining rights to protect public health and the environment in Jefferson County, and also any remaining rights to charge the telecommunications industry fair market value for the use of public infrastructure and right-of-ways is a very bad idea. A little research will show you that the broadband forward ordinance is essentially the same ordinance being promoted by the telecom industry for their monetary benefit and to facilitate the easy rollout of 5G. This should come as no surprise since the Wisconsin Public Service Commission has been a captured agency for many years now. The only remedy for this is to repeal the broadband forward ordinance changes. The second detrimental resolution is Resolution Number 201901, which allocates public money to provide wireless broadband, which studies show is a public health hazard. Wired broadband is faster, far more energy efficient, more secure, and safer for public health and the environment. More and more studies are finding that exposure to wireless radiation is hazardous to public health. The recent National Toxicology Program study looking at wireless radiation found clear evidence of cancer and DNA breakage. The Ramazini Study replicated the National Toxicology Program study at lower levels of exposure and also found that wireless radiation is carcinogenic. Another replicated study found that wireless radiation is a cancer growth promoter. The Advisory Panel to the International Agency for Research on Cancer, IARC, has recommended that IARC- that IARC reevaluate wireless radiation, which is already a group 2B possible human carcinogen for carcinogenicity. Independent experts are calling for it to be classified as a group 1 carcinogenic to humans. Wireless radiation has been shown to have serious neurological and cardiac effects. It causes oxidative damage, endocrine disruption, inappropriate activation of voltage gated ion channels, changes enzyme function, and is pro-inflammatory. A recent study provides evidence that exposure to wireless radiation may cause premature labor and delivery. No public money should be spent to pollute the envi- environment with such a dangerous agent. Instead, the county should be working to provide wired broadband options throughout the county. State law makes providing broadband through a community broadband network more difficult, but not impossible. Community broadband networks have been very successful in numerous locations, providing very high quality internet at a very reasonable rate using fiber to the premises. A partnership with networks to install fiber to the premises without a wireless component allows the county to facilitate, facilitate providing state of the art broadband service without opening themselves or yourselves up to the liability that providing wireless broadband would entail. No insurance company provides liability insurance for the health and environmental effects of wireless radiation, except possibly as a special rider. This is because the science showing that wireless radiation is a health hazard is so strong. The county should take this as a sign that they do not want to take on this liability either. Partnering with networks on wireless broadband would make them liable for damages caused. Finally, studies show broadband slash cell tower installations lower property values up to 20%. These studies were done before most people were aware of the health hazard they pose. So the devaluation will only decrease as more and more people come aware, become aware. For all these reasons, I highly recommend passage of the resolution I circulated last week, which halts funding and cooperation on the wireless project and supports partnering with networks on a wired broadband network. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. We now go to annual reports. Our first report is from county administrator Ben Waymire.
I kind of get the distinct pleasure in my role of watching back during the annual reports and see the great work that's presented by our organizations that we partner with and all our departments and what they do on a day-to-day basis. Um, as I put in my cover memo, I don't think they can properly, um, discuss and show you in a short period of time what they do on a daily basis and, and the success. Um, one thing that we fail to do and we don't take time to do all the time is look at what they do as success. In some ways, our success has become status quo. Um, just today, as an example, Jill Johnson over at Economic Support Division, Human Services, showed us a new award certificate, made a perfect square in the Human Services boardroom now, but we don't talk about what that is all the time, and we gotta do better. Just last week, Chair Schreier and I got noticed for child support, that we are one of 17 counties that got the service award for that division. 17 counties out of 72 in the state. And guess what? That was not the first time that happened in that organization either. We continue to be one of 10 counties in the state that get recognized on an annual basis for how we do GFOA awards for budget and our annual presentation. And we take credit for that because that's the best business practice, is how we spend the money on a daily basis and we make decisions to carry out the tasks and the visions that you ask us to do on a daily basis. And so it's great when you have a chance to listen to our departments and look at what they're looking at in the past year, but what they're looking ahead to do in the future. So before we get into some items, I just want to toss some numbers out, and then we'll get back to them. So think 27. 11,786. Eight to 10. Point 6. Negative point 08. Keep those in mind as we go ahead, not just for my presentation, but when staff starts talking about you in the future. So obviously a big part of what we do is, in my role, is looking at budget and finance. And so a big task that the staff undertook this past year that we continue to look at is priority-based budgeting. And I know Mark will probably be talking about that more in the future as well, but I'm very proud in the time fashion that took place. We identified over 850 programs that your staff does on a daily basis to carry out the missions and values of this county, both for stakeholders internally and externally to the county. It's quite an endeavor as you look at how do you task and how do you rank those items? But the staff stepped up and we had some participation from some of you as that process continued forward. Our hope is this can continue to be a tool to help us make decisions. How do we look at forecasting in the future? And how do we develop greater transparency as we continue to look at the best methodologies and best practices in our financial oversight? At the end of the day, from the board's perspective, this is your single most important annual policy you make every year. Without time, talent, and resources, many of the ideas that we have are just that, they're ideas. This helps us get a way to get, effectuate those changes and move programs forward. We talked a lot about the strategic plan, so I'm not going to take a whole nother five minutes to talk through what we did this last year, but the encouragement to continue to look at that and give feedback of what that looks like in the future and help us as we look at it as it ties back to the comprehensive plan. We've also done a lot with properties last year. Um, as the board is aware, uh, last year we approved looking at the opportunity, um, if performance measures are met, to look at what to do with the county farm and the medical college. Um, we'll see where that heads. But the other big thing that's very exciting going on right now is the old highway site. Um, we started working last year as what does that look like in the future? Um, and how do we redevelop it from what used to be a three, 75-year-old, uh, industrial kind of envi- environment issue to a redevelopment on the river? And how do we integrate some of our parks and recreational opportunities? And so we started working with the city. We worked with the DNRs, we looked at closure related to the remediation requirements, and we developed a great concept. And so last year with the city, um, we got two awards that are going to help us execute the idea of the first joint city-county park in the county, looking at a way to share cost and exposure and, uh, opportunities to utilize not only the river, but our trailhead facilities and just enjoy a green open space. By the same token, we are also looking at how do we develop the private side? And as you'll see in the plans in the future, there'll be a new road and east of there is going to be a place that we are going to look at to bring in housing to the county. And we have some very interested developers looking at that, and there's going to be more to follow as those, um, opportunities move forward. Another big part of this last year has been looking at our five-year capital plan, and the finance committee has had the opportunity to get, listen to Ben lecture a little bit on our five-year capital plan. But as we look at our facilities, they're getting tired, and we're looking at how do we develop the best strategy from a value standpoint to keep our facilities in place? We have quite a bit of deferred maintenance that is going on that's competing with our, what we refer to as operational capital. And when I say operational capital, I'm looking at things such as police cars, IT, things that usually we're not going to get more than five years of life out of. That's competing with how do we take care of our buildings? Um, and so my story was a few weeks ago, I walked into this building and there was a little smoke. Um, there was a little smell. And what happened is our engine of about 56 years old and one of our air handling units finally went kaput. And guess what? We got 56 years out of it. But it also reminds us, we gotta continue to look at how we look at it farther. I had the elevator, uh, engineer design, because we're going to be, have to update our elevator here to, um, this year, at least that's the plan. And, um, he said, "This is the oldest elevator I've gotten to work on, except for a 1904 comment." So I said, "As long as we don't get designated as a historical landmark, we're good to go." But the final thing I just want to continue to reinforce before I go back to those numbers is the idea of collaboration. And, and you saw the perfect picture tonight about collaboration, but I do want to appreciate the fact that the board allows your staff to go out and seek those collaborative efforts. I think if you look at many things that happened in 2018 in many of our departments, it's been outstanding. We got some caring and generosity, uh, people and businesses in this community. We've added staff because of donations. We finished a bridge because of donations. And we looked at ways we can have initiatives that are outside the box, but look at the proactive measures that we do forward. That's all based on collaborations and efforts to work together. And so I just want to continue to thank the board that you let us do those things and kind of let us take the reins off when we look at those opportunities, because there are many when we look at across the board. So those numbers, what do they all mean as we look ahead for the future of the county? And what does it mean? So 27, remember that ALIS data I talked to you about? That's the number of our households that qualify for ALIS within Jefferson County. The state average is 25.8. And by the way, these, this data is based on 2016 for the ALIS data. But that's an average. We have some outliers and areas that are of concern, and we gotta work together on. Parts of water are at 50%. Parts of Fort Attica are at 46%. Parts of Jefferson at 44% per that data. That doesn't mean it's terrible, just mean we gotta keep working together to achieve a better result. Eight to 10. Approximately the number of farms we lost in the last year for various reasons. Some because of retirements, some because of just selling out in terms of time to, um, move on, but eight to 10. Point 6%. From 2012 to 2017, that was our population growth in Jefferson County. State average is 1.3%. 788, that's Jefferson's county per capita spend. The statewide average for counties is 945, based on 2017 data. So we're well, we're below that average. Property tax per capita, 348, that's what the 348 is. State average per capita is 378, so we're right about on the, the average for that. 177. Debt per capita. State average per county is 441, so we're well below the state, um, average for that. That's, that's a good thing. Negative point 08. That's our five-year job growth. Now, there's anomaly. A few years ago, we lost a couple of big companies, Tyson, McCain's, right? And that was when, uh, Jefferson was specifically declared an economic distressed area, specifically city of Jefferson, because the numbers were so large. The great thing is we've recovered, we're back to normal, but if you look at the average, it's not the best statistical data, uh, measure spread. And then finally, 1.2, that was our net new construction last year. The state average is 1.6. So I bring that information forward as we look at the decisions we make impact almost all those data sets in the future. It's how do we perform our job on a day-to-day basis? It's how do we plan our infrastructure of the future? Where do we plan for our growth? And where do we plan to preserve our natural resources? That's all part of the puzzle as we look ahead. But the, the stat is not just numbers, right? When you look at those numbers, there's someone behind those numbers. And so as we focus on staff day-to-day basis, especially our frontline employees, they have a face with those numbers. And so as we bring it to the big table here, how do we make that better as a collective team? Because at the end of the day, governing is a team sport. It's just not us here. It's working with the partners and other local governments. It's working with business. It's working with nonprofits. And so as you listen to the reports in the next upcoming months from the other, uh, departments, keep in mind of these things. And how do we look at solving these problems together? And how do we take those great attributes and keep moving forward? Because there's still a lot of great positive things that we have going on. So with that being said, Mr. Chair, all right, you're my time.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Economic Development Consortium, Vicki Pratt.
Um, we handed out the 2018 annual report, so, um, I'm just going to walk through some of the highlights of that report. And, um, if we don't spend too much time on that, maybe I'll even talk a little bit about what we're doing next, because we're doing all kinds of things. So, um, I want to start with just thanking all of you for supporting our economic development efforts. As you know, we've made a lot of changes in the almost three years that I've been leading the JCEDC, and, uh, those changes wouldn't have been possible without the support of this board and without the support of that county administrator. So I really want to thank you. Um, let's start with the home buyer program. As you know, JCEDC, um, runs the home buyer program, which allows us to help people buy homes and also rehab homes. Um, some of the data that's in that annual report, we delivered 400 counseling hours last year. We delivered 65 home buyer seminar hours. We counseled 86 families last year, um, with that particular program. The result of that was 28 homes were purchased. 18 of them included, were purchased with, uh, with the grants that were available, and five were purchased without those grants. We helped 22, um, home purchases in, in Jefferson County. We also helped with a home purchase in Dodge County as well. So if you look at page four of your, of the annual report, you'll see the breakdown of that data. Um, on page five, we start talking about the revolving loan fund. So, um, the revolving loan fund in 2018, because it is now gone, uh, but the revolving loan fund in 2018, we made one loan, um, for over 380,000 to Basin Precision Machining. They made an overall investment in the community of over $13 million, adding physical footprint as well as machinery and equipment, um, and adding, adding many jobs, um, in, in that process as well. And there may be more to come. Um, so we're excited about that. And with our revolving loan fund loans were, we had one loan that was paid off and paid in full in 2018. That was the loan to Kendall Packaging. Um, as of the end of the year, we had three loans in the portfolio, uh, Burger King, Rushing Waters, and Basin. And the fund balance at the end of the year was 734,64983. Um, as I said, that, that loan program is now closed. Um, the state swept everybody's municipal revolving loan funds back, so we currently don't have a tool to help our businesses, um, you know, with that type of gap financing. And that's one of the creative things we're doing on the other side of the house, because as you know, we have JCEDC and then we have Thrive Economic Development. So we're doing some interesting things over there to try to figure out a way around that. Um, also last year, we closed out the Brownfield Assessment Grant. Um, we closed that out at the end of September. The result of, of us running that, uh, grant was we were able to complete three Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessments. One was at the Gothier property in Waterloo, one was at the Biwa property in Johnson Creek, and one at the Hotel property in Watertown. Um, every one of those properties, um, as we closed out those assessments, we have the full reports. Again, this was all, this was EPA money. Um, there is some cleanup recommendations on each one of those sites that, you know, if, if we get somebody who wants to invest in those sites, they now understand what that next level of investment has to be before they can put a shovel in the ground and build what they want to build. Um, starting on page six of the report, we start talking about our business development work. Um, so in the pipeline last year, we, we track what we call our opportunity pipeline. So these are all of our opportunities as we're talking to, to folks about potentially investing businesses, about investing, um, somewhere in Jefferson County and/or in Dodge County. Um, we had 58 investment opportunities in the pipeline last year. And if you look at that breakdown on page six, the vast majority were again manufacturing. So we see this year over year now, um, the vast majority of these opportunities that are coming to us are manufacturing related. We delivered a lot of business, um, assistance and support services last year. We've been expanding that work, um, working with municipalities across the two counties on, to try to help them be more competitive, be more development ready. And that can be anything and everything from helping them understand how they might take a look at a piece of property, um, perhaps get an option on it, perhaps get a right of first refusal as opposed to just buying it. Um, some of the investments that should be made on that property in order to make it development ready, those types of issues. In addition to that, we spend a lot of time with folks, um, who are prospective entrepreneurs. So people who, people who have a dollar and a dream, they're excited, they want to do something, um, but they may need a tremendous amount of assistance. They, they don't have a business plan, they, they don't, they've not done a marketing feasibility study, they haven't really vetted their idea to see if it's going to work in the marketplace. And so we work with folks like that, not necessarily us taking them through the business plan, but me vetting them personally and making sure that I then get them the services that they need to take it forward. Um, so we did a lot of, um, site searches last year as well. Um, we do confidential site searches, so very often I'll have a business contact me directly, um, and tell me about their need to expand or their need to make another investment. And they are looking for a specific type of property, right? And so what we do is, is we will look through, we have a database of information, but I also do outreach to a whole bunch of folks. Um, we have a, a network of folks where we, we try to find the building, the site that best meets that business's needs. So, um, we did 21 of those last year. Um, nine of them were searches that were in two counties. They were both Dodge and Jefferson. 10 of them were Jefferson County only searches, and two of them were Dodge County only searches. And again, the customer defines the parameters. Um, of course, I spent a lot of time with the customer to help them define the parameters, but the customer defines those parameters and we move forward. So what was the outcome of that work last year? Well, if you take a look on page seven, you will see, um, we had six, what I would, what I would call win- would call wins. We had six wins. Two of them were really press release-worthy wins, and they were J C B Flavors and Basin Precision Machining. We had, we were eliminated from three of those opportunities, primarily because we didn't have the inventory that the customer was looking for. We had four, seven of those that were delayed directly by the customer. They said, you know what? We need to stop this right now because we gotta do other things, but we'll come back to it. Eight of them were just the customer said, we're really not gonna be able to do this right at this time. Our plans were bigger than our, than our finances, or whatever, whatever the story was. We have customers that just go dark. You do a lot of work for them, you give them all the information that they're looking for, and then they drop off the face of the earth. They don't answer phone calls, they don't respond, so it is what it is. And twenty-one of those were carried forward into two thousand nineteen. So with just J C B and Basin, we, we were part of more than sixteen million dollars in new business investment in the county last year, impacting over seventy jobs last year. And, you know, we, I'm happy to talk more about those particular projects, but again, anytime that we can help our businesses stay in our county and grow in our county, that is a good thing. And both of those businesses were county-based businesses that could have made those investments in other places and chose not to. So workforce, we have three main goals, right? Business development, workforce development, and branding, marketing, communications. So if you look at page eight, we start talking about workforce, and, and one of the really great collaborative efforts resulted in us being able to release a labor availability analysis last year. First one ever done in the state of Wisconsin, interestingly enough. And that was a partnership with the city, the county, the state of Wisconsin, and Dodge County SHRM, which is a society for human resource managers, actually put some funding into helping us get that done. This is primary research. Businesses are always telling us there's no one to hire, there's no one out there. That's never true. It's just, you have to go out there and document what is out there. So you've got some highlights of the, of the report that is on page eight of the annual report, but you can download the full studies there on our website. So the labor availability analysis was focused on manufacturing because we have over nineteen thousand people employed in manufacturing in the two-county area. So it is the largest employer by industry sector. And we wanted to make sure that we could document that we had a workforce. In our labor basin area, there's over seven hundred thousand people living in our labor basin area. Our available labor pool for Jefferson County is over two hundred and thirty-two thousand people. So we've got the documentation, and that's a big deal. We talk about that a lot as we are working on projects and talking to corporate real estate execs, site selectors, that we have, we have documentation about the fact that there is labor out there. Now, they want to be paid, and that's very important. As a matter of fact, if you look at the data, the, the single most important aspects, because we always ask when we do these types of surveys, so what would it take for you to accept a job in manufacturing in Jefferson County? What are you looking for? What are the benefits that mean the most to you? Number one, wage. They want to make money. Number two, on-the-job training or paid training. Number three was retirement benefits. Number four was health benefits. And number five was vacation. So it's all about the money. And that's what they're looking for. Branding, marketing, communications, we launched an amazing website, thriveed.org. If you haven't been there yet, go there. You will just be astounded by all the data that is out there. We know, as an economic development organization, we know as a region, when we get calls from corporate real estate execs, from site selectors, from businesses that are currently not here, it's because they've already looked at us online. They've looked to see, do we have what they think they need for their next business investment? So that site has got to be robust. It's gotta have all this great information on it. We have over a hundred and thirty industrial and commercial sites and buildings on that site. It's updated constantly. Tons of demographics around those businesses so that you can understand where your labor is. But I just want to talk about the results of launching that site, because this is what tells the story. Between the first of January and the ninth, or, yeah, and the ninth of October last year, we only had nine hundred and ninety-page views. We launched that site on the tenth of October, and between the tenth of October and the end of the year, we had two thousand six hundred and thirty-nine page views. So we are getting looked at, and that's important. We also have a presence on social media. We've been out doing, doing presentations, meeting with folks across the two regional areas that, that we work in, the Milwaukee-Wakasha area and the Madison region as well, giving presentations about what we have to offer and how we do economic development here in Jefferson and in Dodge Counties. We also have report, in the report, we have our permit data update. And this is something we started doing a couple of years ago. We want to track these trends, these investment trends over time in Jefferson County, Dodge County, and get a sense for where are we seeing growth and what type of growth, right? We're looking for that high wealth growth. So we look at the average value of the permits. So Jefferson County cities and towns issued sixty-eight commercial and industrial permits in two thousand eighteen with a value, a total value of over twenty-nine million dollars, an average value of four hundred and forty thousand eight eighty-three. Of the cities and towns in Jefferson County, the city of Jefferson had the highest average value for commercial and industrial permits issued at nine hundred and twenty thousand two ninety-five. The towns in Jefferson County issued a hundred and sixty-two commercial industrial permits with a total value of over sixty-three million and an average value of three hundred and ninety-three thousand five nineteen. I point that out because there's an error in the report, and we will have to, we'll have to fix that for you. In the report, it says the average value is over three million, and that's not right. That math doesn't work. It's three hundred and ninety-three thousand five nineteen. So in total, we saw a decrease in two thousand eighteen in the actual number of commercial industrial permits that were issued in Jefferson County, but we saw a significant increase in the average value of those commercial and industrial permits. So that's good news. Residential permits in Jefferson County as well, we saw a decrease in the number, but a very nice increase in the average value of, of those permits issued. And again, all that data is on page, starts on page eleven in your annual report. We also took a look at, at the Dodge County data, and, you know, for our purposes, just to say that we compared, we took a look at the commercial industrial permit data for all of Jefferson County and all of Dodge County, and then we took a look at the residential for all of Jefferson County and all of Dodge County. And while Jefferson County issued a total of two hundred and thirty commercial industrial permits with an average value of four hundred and seven thousand, Dodge County issued a hundred and sixty-seven with an average value of three hundred and eight thousand three seventy-four. So we were, we were higher on our average value of permits, and we issued more of them. However, if you go to the last page on the industrial market data for two thousand eighteen, that's really interesting. And it, it, two thousand eighteen data for the two counties together looks exactly like the two thousand seventeen data for the two counties together. So Jefferson County, this is, this is industrial sales data. The median sales price for properties sold in two thousand eighteen in Jefferson County was six hundred thousand dollars with a median per square foot of thirty-four fifty-eight. In Dodge County, that median sales price was eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight fifty with a median per square foot of forty-four twenty-four. So just like in two thousand seventeen, industrial property sells for more in Dodge County than it does in Jefferson County. So again, we've got full reports on the labor availability study. We've got tons of data on our website. I encourage you to go there and take a look at that, and I'm happy to do this work for all of you and support our growth. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Human Resources Department, Terry Palm-Kostrowski.
I'm gonna start out by saying, anything goes wrong, it's all technical difficulties. I'd start that out. So I'm also gonna start out with a disclaimer that most of my presentation, if not all of it, of what I'm talking about is in regards to stereotypical views and perceptions. And with that, though, I want to go over just real quick. I'm not gonna read through any of this, and you guys all have a copy of this, other than the pretty pictures and graphs in there that are fun to look at. If you spend time reading it, I would encourage you to read the last three pages. It talks about the goals that I had established for two thousand eighteen, what our department accomplished, what we maybe didn't accomplish, and then what we want to keep working on in two thousand nineteen and beyond, because most of them are not just your kind of goals. And I did do, do we have, okay, we got this going up here. This is, I found this kind of last minute. One of the goals that we have is taking a whole look at our personnel ordinance, and I know our H R committee has been involved with a lot of that. And I found this, and it says, I'm afraid your H R procedures are in a bad way. And unfortunately, I think ours are. And so I think this whole board will be seeing a recommendation, if not by the end of the year, early in two thousand twenty, in regards to just trying to get it all organized and making sure we don't have any conflicting ordinances or resolution, or policies in that. So with that, do we have? Oh, you want that stuff? Oh, I don't know. Oh, okay, yeah, so I forgot what I was doing here. So I'm gonna start out with just a little fun, fun thing, making fun of H R, because there's a lot of stuff out there making fun of H R, so hopefully this doesn't offend anybody. Do you have it? Oh. That's what I was doing. I know. Yes. In an effort to increase productivity, please note the latest policy changes going into effect next Monday. Sick days. We will no longer accept a doctor's notice proof of illness. If you are able to go to the doctor, you are able to come to work. Personal days. Each employee will receive fifty-two personal days a year. They are called Sundays. Enjoy them. Breathe and leave. Funerals are no longer an excuse for missing work. There is nothing you can do for dead friends or relatives. They're already dead. You should be at work. Bathroom breaks. Entirely too much time is being spent in bathrooms. There is now a strict three-minute time limit in the stalls. At the end of three minutes, an alarm will sound, the toilet paper roll will retract, the stall door will open, and your picture will be taken and posted on Facebook. Thank you for calling the Human Resources Department, where the lives of disgruntled workers are about to get even worse than they already are. Human hotline, ta-ta. So what was funny was I was putting that, my daughter, who's eleven, was listening to that, and she's looking, Mom, is that where you work? No, it's not, it's not that bad, sweetie. So, can I go through this? That was that. Oops.
Thank you for calling the automated sobriety test. The automated sobriety test uses a variety of scientific questions and careful mathematical analysis to deduce whether a call-
All right. We'll get that back up. What I have for you, when I come here quarterly and I go over the retirement recognitions, last time I was here, I warned you that when I do my annual report, I wanted to talk a little bit about our demographics, the Jefferson County, our employees, actually make you a visual of what it looks like and what we're facing in the next few years. And so this one isn't really too outstanding. I don't know if I can have a little pointer. Doesn't point. It just goes through, we basically have almost fifty-fifty percent in regards to male and female workers. And I don't know if you guys can see this one, but this one breaks it down to how old our population is. And what it's talking about, oh, it does. This right here goes through our age group of age zero to about forty-five, and beyond that, forty-five to over sixty. Essentially, what that looks like is more than half of our population in the next ten years are gonna be eligible for retirement. And I don't want to put people on the spot, but I'm gonna ask if you want to, department heads and managers, if you can stand up for me, because we got a number of them in the room. Oh, he doesn't wanna. Ben is denying to stand up. So, I mean, look around this room. We don't have all of them standing, but you got twelve or thirteen of us in here. I will almost guarantee you in seven, eight years from now, more than half of us aren't gonna be here. Not gonna ask those to sit down, because I don't have a chair to sit down on, or I would. So I just want you to look at all the years of experience in here in our leadership that is going to be gone shortly, and the challenge that we have in replacing that. And this just talks about the years of experience that we actually have in the county. Again, you can look at from eight, from twenty to twenty-nine years, we have eighteen percent. Thirty to thirty-nine years, three percent plus, forty-plus years of experience, one percent. That's almost a quarter of our population, or of our employees, that have over twenty years of experience here. And with that, I'm gonna back up. Get that. So today, and I think Vicki kind of touched on some of that, as regards to what our consumer demographic, demographics is, which is mostly the millennials that we'll be hiring from right now. And that's for anybody born nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand two, give or take. And that comes with its own challenges. And again, some of this is stereotypical, I realize that, but that goes through career expectations, just what Vicki said. The younger generation coming up, they're more focused on, they want that paycheck, they want to move quickly within the organization. Technology, they are, they want something savvy, and that also includes for retire, or recruitment purposes. So what we have right now, even though we're online, a lot of businesses that are recruiting for millennials, they don't even go through the system like we have right now. Again, faster career advancement, entrepreneurial spirit, ambition, and talking about that, finding it, not just ambition, it's hard for employers to fulfill the ambition that millennials have. In order to keep them busy and challenged is one of the bigger challenges. Hunger to learn, again, they want to do different things. They want to learn, they want to move through an organization. So with that, before I go to my last one here, the second challenge isn't just how do you recruit millennials, but I think it goes with our strategic plan. How do we communicate with employees? How do we train employees? How do we involve employees so that they're involved in our strategic plan and they're with us in what our goals are to set forward? That's another whole issue that we're working on. So what that means for H R, and I wanted to show the video, I think I'm gonna do that last, is, you know, we have to think differently, we have to do things differently, and what that's going to mean is we're gonna have to use our time and our resources differently, increasing that to be able to recruit differently and retain. And we've experienced some of that already. We've worked on, I'm looking over at human services, different ways for our social workers, because we found out that what we're doing was we're almost a training round for them. So how do we keep them here after we get them trained? And so those were, again, just some of the challenges that we'll be working on, not just next year, but in the next decade or so. So if there's any questions before I show my last. Okay. So hope, you can't make this one. Oh, this one was kind of funny, too. So it's- Huh? I don't know what it's doing. Oh, I'll come back and show it. All right, can you open up a browser for me? So with this last one, what it is, it is kind of, I thought it was kind of funny, and I think it will touch on almost anybody in this room, just to reflect a little bit on yourself, what might be true of what people say about us, no matter what, how, what our age is. Hopefully, you'll get a little chuckle, chuckle out of it. But if you take it to, if you don't look at the extreme portion of this, I think you'll find that it really does go to some of the challenges that we do face.
Do I start it at the beginning? Yep, through the ad.
Absolutely not. Why not? Because you're a baby boomer, and I'm a millennial.
Well, Melanie, I, I am overqualified for this job.
I don't know where you got this. We don't do paper applications.
I made it. I don't do the internet.
Okay. That is the third time you have said that this interview, and it also says so on this homemade job application.
There you go, Jim.
I don't know what this is for.
Don't you need a trophy anytime you, anything?
Oh, it's hot. How'd you get here? Horse?
I drove. My car. I own it. After eight more payments. How'd you get here?
I took an Ember.
Do not know what that is. Bet you're a-
After eight more payments. How'd you get here?
I took an Uber.
Do not know what that is. Bet you're a vegan.
Yeah, because I'm not a monster. Your generation is afraid of black people.
Your generation thinks you are black people.
A word? Look at who you guys voted for.
Yeah, that's right. I voted. This is the only way you'll ever own a house.
Learning how to text is the only way you'll ever communicate with your son.
So. All right, guys, who took my Sheryl Crow? Gen X.
That was my favorite part. Coming from a Gen Xer, yes. Again, if there are any questions, please let me know, or if you'd like to get more information. On some of the issues that we are facing. I mean, we talk, Ben and I, almost daily on some of that, and looking at Kathy and some of our other department heads here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Our final report for this evening is from the medical examiner, Nicole Tesh.
Good evening. I have no videos. I'm not funny, and any of the jokes that I might tell are not appropriate for tonight. So, the medical examiner's office is responsible for a lot more than just our statutory requirements of determining cause and manner of death, doing cremation investigations, identifying decedents, and notifying families. We do a lot more, at least I'd like to do a lot more. So I try to get involved with the community. My staff has really helped get involved with the community as well, with some of the things that my office is doing or participating in. So I just want to highlight some of those things. So in 2018, I continued to participate with the child death review team. I provided mutual aid for other counties, specifically Dodge County. I enjoy working with PJ up there. We have similar backgrounds, we operate very similarly, so we like to bounce things off of one another a lot, and we do help one another. I provide education for our local law enforcement, our first responders, healthcare agencies, and local students. I had a couple of shadows. Haven't had any interns yet, because I don't really have that big of a caseload during the daytime to have somebody particularly come out with me all the time. But I think shadowing is very important for students, so that we can get more people in this field to help our community more. Another thing that I participate in is our Jefferson County Zero Suicide Team. We developed that a couple of years ago, and it's just kind of taken off in the last year and a half or so. In 2018, we really worked towards involving more of our community in our meetings, and then in September, we held our first Resource Fair. It was held at the Jefferson High School, and it was on September 8th, trying to keep it around September 10th, which is World Suicide Prevention Day. So we, what we did was we had mental health resources outside in the lobby of the high school, and inside the auditorium, we had a couple of speakers with lived experience regarding suicide attempts and survivor of suicide, who his sister had died from suicide. So it seemed, I think we had about 80 people attend that day that were not related to Jefferson County, you know, to the Zero Suicide Team, just 80 community members. And we're hoping to build up on that each year with more participants and more community members coming and visiting and seeing. We have a couple of speakers lined up for this year that we want to ask to come. So hopefully, it'll work out the same, and we'll eventually work up to having a walk with it. So it, we have to start small. So we did that Suicide Resource Fair, and then we also developed a prevention brochure that can be handed out to community members or providers that really tells about the risk factors for suicide, and just gives a bunch of hotlines such as veterans, general suicidal persons, LGBTQ people, EMS and fire, and law enforcement personnel. Because, you know, a lot of people don't think about having a specific line for them, peer support-wise. And they may not want to use their EAP. They may not want to confide in anybody that's not one of their peers. These lines specifically that I found for our law enforcement officers and our local fire and EMS are supported by their peers, and it's confidential. So we added those to the brochure, and it's being passed around as much as we can get out to the providers. I'm also in the process of developing a chaplain program for our county. It's slow-going, so we started that in 2018, just trying to, it started with the Zero Suicide Team, but also with the Child Death Review Team, because we realized that when we make notifications to families for their loved one's death, or, you know, we have a scene that is particularly, you know, distraught families are available, we really need to have somebody there that can help them. And they may not have anybody, they may not have any family members. So currently, it should be, should be completed this year. I have a few people already on my list of participants that will help us when we do have somebody that is in a crisis. And lastly, we started in 2018, developing a resting place for our Jefferson County indigents. So I'll complete that later on this year, which you should hear more about in September. I'm hoping that in September, it will be installed. But I have several indigents a year, usually roughly about two, and so we want them to have a final resting place that's in one place. I don't want them scattered around the county in different cemeteries. I want them in one place. So I look forward to letting you guys know about that next year, and there'll be photos, but I'll also inform you once it actually is happening. Like I said, it should be around September sometime, so that's upcoming. My annual report showcases some of my statistics. If you look at the numbers, we had a slight increase in cases and a slight decrease in the types of, certain types of cases. And as the nation has been seeing an increase in drugs and suicide deaths, our county showed a slight decrease. I'd like to attribute some of the decrease in the suicides to some of the prevention techniques that our county is utilizing. And the word that we've gotten out, if we've saved one person, then it's a success. Some of my data here, I'm going to go over. Like I said, we increased a little bit in the total number of cases that were reported to our office. I looked at the data, and I didn't know this data existed, because I just don't, I don't use the website, and I should. But WISH shows how many deaths the county has. And that's just one of the statistics, one of the many. And so I looked at the total deaths in Jefferson County for 2017, that's the latest I can see, and there were a little over 700. So there were probably about 170 or 80 that weren't reported to me. Because I don't require every death to be reported to the medical examiner's office, I'd be even busier. So we do go by the statute on what needs to be reported, plus I am allowed to statutorily dictate what I want reported. So I pick and choose with my hospitals, hospice agencies, and such, what I'd like them to report, so that we try to catch all the deaths that could potentially be missed, you know, if there's trauma, and they just didn't know, or they didn't report it. So anyway, so 2017, we did 524, we saw an increase of about 26 deaths, 25 deaths. The number of actual responses to scenes decreased just by a couple, but they're about the same. But our phone investigations increased, and that could be hospital and hospice cases where we didn't have to respond to a residence. But that's a lot of our, our population that are falling and having hip injuries or head bleeds. So those are our phone investigations. Our cremations also increased, so we did have just a, it seems like we, I swear we had a bigger increase in our cremation permits, it really was only about five, but I feel like I was doing cremation views all the time. But everything's just kind of going up slowly. Our manners of death didn't change too much. Naturally, with the rise in cases, we're going to have a rise in the types of cases. So natural deaths are always the most occurring death, and accident is always second, because that encompasses our drug deaths, our accidental deaths, that are motor vehicle crashes, the hip fractures and such. So anything that's accidental in nature, not intentional. Our suicides decreased by four. Our homicides stayed about the same. Undetermined, we try not to have those, because families really like to have answers, but I just, there were two cases I couldn't do anything with last year. I spoke with multiple pathologists on them, and there was just no answer. A couple of interests we have are the drug-related deaths and the traffic fatalities. Our traffic fatalities are on the rise. It's no surprise, it is nationally. The drug deaths, although we were lower, the drugs have changed. So last year, we had 16 drug-related deaths, and this year, we, last, I'm sorry, 2018, we had 13. What did go down significantly was, from 17 to 18, there were 11 heroin-involved deaths, and there were only three last year. However, under the, under the other opiates contributing, what that means is what other opiates were involved in these deaths. And there were nine that had other opiates in there. Three-quarters of them, I won't say, I think it was seven, seven of them were fentanyl. So there was a significant increase in fentanyl in my drug deaths. Couple of statistics of interest that I have here, we did one disinterment. So when you have somebody that it needs to be moved from a cemetery to another cemetery, or they're being removed from the cemetery to be cremated, we're required to get a permit from the medical examiner. It's pretty easy to do that, they just request it, and I say yes. We had two indigents last year, and we continue to partner with a tissue donation agency to promote tissue donation, and so we had 10 recoveries last year. I think that's about it for our interesting statistics. I did about 50 autopsies last year, which is consistent with going up by a couple each year, based on the types of deaths we have. I can't really predict them, but I try for budget purposes. I'm predicting that this year is going to be a little bit higher for our cremation permits. I know right now, being a third through the year, I'm already well past what I was last year. You know, it's just, it's cheaper, it's more efficient, and people don't want to have their loved one in the ground anymore. They want to be able to, you know, spread their ashes somewhere. I mean, they're doing a lot more heartfelt things than just burying someone, which I don't care either way, but I think that's nice either way, but I think it's really neat, some of the things you can do with cremated remains, and you can even make art out of them. So, and they're really cool, it's like, it's like glass paperweights. So, so we're seeing a big increase in the cremations, which is more, it's more job for my office, though, because we have to view all those bodies. So when we do a cremation view, it does take time for my staff, and then I have to also issue that permit and make sure it's appropriate. So, so the business in my office is still going. It's increasing this year, and I think it's going to continue to, hopefully exponentially, it's low. If anybody has any questions, or you want any other specific statistics, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to committee reports, resolutions, and ordinances. First is the executive committee with a resolution, conducting an advisory referendum to create an independent, nonpartisan redistricting commission. Supervisor Renaud, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to yield the floor on this resolution to Supervisor White, who is the author of it.
Supervisor White, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisor Renaud. Resolution number 2019-13 pertaining to conducting an advisory referendum to create an independent, nonpartisan redistricting commission. Executive summary. Under current law, the district boundaries for congressional and state legislative districts must be redrawn every 10 years after a census in a process known as redistricting. The method by which redistricting occurs is governed by state law. In most states, these district lines are drawn by the state legislatures. This creates a serious conflict of interest whereby legislators can draw the districts in such a way so as to give an unfair partisan advantage to both themselves and to the controlling political party, commonly referred to as gerrymandering. This can have a chilling effect on democracy, as one party can grant itself an artificial level of dominance over the political system. Some states have addressed gerrymandering by creating independent, nonpartisan commissions for redistricting. Wisconsin can adopt a similar method, but such a change can only be made by the state legislature. This resolution authorizes Jefferson County to conduct a countywide advisory referendum to be held at the November 2020 general election. The executive committee considered this resolution at its meeting on April 24, 2019, and voted to forward it to the county board for approval. This will allow voters to communicate directly to the state legislature about their views on the subject. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors that a countywide advisory referendum be conducted at the November 2020 general election with the question stated as follows. Should the state legislature pass a constitutional amendment that entrusts the redistricting process to an independent, nonpartisan commission? Fiscal note, this advisory referendum will cost an estimated $1,000. Mr. Chair, I move for adoption of this resolution.
Moved in second to conduct an advisory referendum to create an independent, nonpartisan redistricting commission. Discussion. Supervisor White has the floor first, then Supervisor Schultz, if you'd like.
This should not be a partisan issue. Just because Republicans happen to be in control in Wisconsin and are responsible for the maps that we have here, Democrats have been just as guilty in other states. As we heard during public comment, in Illinois, controlled by Democrats, the maps are almost just as bad, and the cases in Maryland. Really, what it comes down to is, we can't have the fox guarding the hen house. We can't have the legislators who would benefit get to draw these maps. Because really, it comes down to this, that voters should pick their legislators. Legislators should not be picking their voters. What we have here under gerrymandering as it exists, it dilutes people's votes and makes it where we don't have fair competitive elections anymore. And ultimately, whichever political party you're with, whether you're a liberal, a moderate, or a conservative, I think we can all get behind letting people's voices be heard fairly and clearly. And that's what this is about. Because ultimately, it seems every time the issue is brought up to the state legislature, they like to play the excuse of, "Nobody cares about this issue. Who's asking for this to be done?" So I say, "Let's let the voters actually speak for themselves. Do they think that this is a problem worth addressing?" So that is why I believe it's in the best interest of our democracy to have a vote during the 2020 presidential election. The cost will be minimal, since we already have an election conducted. We can merely add this important question onto the ballot and let voters' views be heard. It has been discussed with me that the language of the actual ballot question should be modified slightly. I do have it now where it was suggesting that a constitutional amendment be the route taken to solve this issue. There is an argument that you could make this change by state statute, and a constitutional amendment wouldn't be required. So for that reason, Mr. Chair, I would move to amend the resolution to change the ballot question as follows. To, should the state legislature transfer the powers and duties of redistricting to an independent, nonpartisan commission?
Moved in second to amend the resolution. Discussion on the amendment. Supervisor White, would you like to speak on the amendment?
As I said, I believe it, this amendment makes the ballot question a little more flexible, and really, it allows the voters to say, "This change needs to be made. The state legislature can decide what's the best way to accomplish it." But ultimately, this is a problem that needs to be solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Supervisor Herbst, please.
Am I correct, and Iowa has a nonpartisan commission that does the districts?
That is correct, and...
How's that working?
It's been working very well, and they've had it for several decades. Ultimately, it's, as it says, independent. It's appointed by elected officials, but ultimately, they're independent because they're not subject to the legislature afterwards. In Iowa, they propose maps, which are then submitted... In Iowa, they propose maps, which are then submitted to the state legislature for a vote, but the state legislature is not actually drawing the map themselves. It's a, it's a compromise hybrid model, but for Iowa, it's worked very well, to have a lot fairer system in play, so that would be a good solution.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Okay, we'll have a voice vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, now we're back to the original question. Discussion on the original question. Supervisor Schultz, please.
I would like to thank the Executive Committee for bringing this forward to the whole board. I wish I could stand here, and Supervisor White alluded to this, I wish I could stand here and tell you that my party never did this. But the fact of the matter is that both parties have, over the years, and gerrymandering is a very old process. And, and both parties have used it to their advantage, and it's antithetical to what our republic is supposed to be about. It's wrong. And it's really outdated, because we are living now in a day and an age where you can take and you can put all of the requirements for redistricting in a computer, and have the computer, in fact, I believe we do that here at the county, and have the computer draw the districts, and do maybe a little tweaking where neighborhoods, you know, got excluded from whatever. But using gerrymandering, you, and both parties have done it, to help to advantage, to give them more and more of an advantage, is wrong. It is just plain wrong. It is not what our government is supposed to be about. Again, thank you for bringing this forward, I would urge everybody to support this.
Further discussion. We'll have a roll call vote unless somebody requests, I mean, we'll have a voice vote unless somebody requests a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Resolution is adopted, we will have an advisory referendum. Next from the Executive Committee, a resolution authorizing to amend the partnership agreement with Dodge County to provide economic development services. Supervisor Renard, please.
Resolution number 2019-14. In February of 2017, Dodge County, Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium, the JCEDC, Glacial Heritage Development Partnership, the GHDP, now known as Thrive ED, and Jefferson County entered into a partnership agreement to provide economic development services to Dodge County for $85,000 per year. The partnership agreement was approved by County, by Jefferson County through Resolution 2016-60. Since entering into the partnership agreement, work has continued to increase in Dodge and Jefferson Counties in carrying out economic development services, resulting in the need for additional resources. To address the need for additional resources, Dodge County has agreed to increase its contribution to be consistent with other JCEDC members in the amount of $1.50 per capita of Dodge County population. Dodge County approved this increase at its April 2019 county board meeting, with an effective date of July 1, 2019. Based on the current population in Dodge County, this would result in an increased contribution of $24,961.75 for the remainder of 2019. Dodge County's annual contribution beginning in 2020 will be approximately $134,923.50. This amount will be adjusted based on changes in the Dodge County population. These additional funds will be used to create a contracted business development position for the JCEDC to expand the capacity of the organization. At a future time, this may become a county employee position. In exchange for the additional funding, the JCEDC is committing to have this position three-quarter time onsite in Dodge County. Dodge County will also appoint a member to serve on the JCEDC, in addition to the current representation Dodge County has on the Thrive ED board. The proposed amendments to the partnership agreement were reviewed by the Executive Committee on April 24, 2019, the JCEDC on April 25, 2019, the Human Resources Committee on May 7, 2019, and the Finance Committee on May 9, 2019. All committees unanimously approve the proposed amendments to the partnership agreement. As the fiscal note, account number, there, you see it there, consortium Dodge County Consortium revenue will increase from $85,000 to $109,962. An account for professional services will increase from $20,000 to $70,000. An account for operating reserve will decrease by $25,038. This is a budget amendment, and it requires twenty votes for passage. I move approval of this resolution.
Moved in second to amend the partnership agreement with Dodge County to provide economic development services. So the essence of the amendment is that Dodge County will pay more and in turn receive more services. Okay, it's a budget amendment, twenty votes are required for adoption.
Votes are locked. We have twenty-nine yes, one no, and zero absent.
The resolution is adopted. Now to the Finance Committee with a resolution disallowing the claim of Janet Heidel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2019-15. A claim has been made against Jefferson County for damages. The claim has been reviewed by the county insurance carrier Wimick and was recommended for disallowance based on the finding that the county has no liability for this claim and is not legally responsible for alleged damages. This resolution formally denies said claim filed against Jefferson County, directs the corporation counsel to give the claimant notice of disallowance. The Finance Committee met on April 11, 2019, and recommend forwarding this resolution to county board for approval. Fiscal note: This matter has been referred to the Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company and will be resolved in accordance with the terms of the county policy. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved in second to disallow the claim of Janet Heidel. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Resolution is adopted. Now a resolution disallowing the claim of Alyssa Johnson. Supervisor Jones, please.
Resolution number 2019-16. A claim has been made against Jefferson County for damages. The claim has been reviewed by county insurance carrier Wimick and was recommended for disallowance based on the finding that the county has no liability for this claim and is not legally responsible for alleged damages. This resolution formally denies the claim filed against Jefferson County, directs the corporation counsel to give the claimant notice of disallowance. On May 9, 2019, the Finance Committee recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board for approval. Fiscal note: This matter has been referred to the Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company and will be resolved in accordance with the terms of the county policy. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved in second to disallow the claim of Alyssa Johnson. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Resolution is adopted. Finally, from the Finance Committee, a resolution to amend the 2019 Health Department budget. Supervisor Jones.
Resolution number 2019-17. The Jefferson County Health Department was awarded an enhanced public health preparedness, the Opiate Epidemic Public Health Crisis Response Grant from the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services, Division of Public Health, Public Health Preparedness Program, to be used to cover an additional twenty hours of registered nurse wages and benefits and to develop opiate toolkit booklets, printing costs for 1,000 copies and mailing of the booklets uncompleted. The award of this grant was not anticipated at the time the budget was adopted. Furthermore, the 2019 Women Infant and Children Program, WIC, funding released by the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services, funding released on April 3, 2019, resulted in an increase of $9,670 in available funds for Jefferson County. Of this, $6,437 must be used to pay for creative marketing resources for the Mom Strong Outreach Campaign. The balance of $3,323 will be used off said costs typically funded by county levy. On May 9, 2019, the Finance Committee recommended forwarding this resolution to county board for approval. Fiscal note: Enclosed at a revised budget adjustment request form says a budget amendment, twenty affirmative votes are required for passage. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved in second to amend the 2019 Health Department budget. Discussion. Twenty votes are required for adoption. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Votes are locked. We have thirty yes, zero no, zero absent.
Resolution is adopted, the Health Department budget is amended. Now to the Human Resources Committee. With a resolution creating one full-time maintenance worker two position and eliminating two 1,000-hour grounds worker positions at the Fair Park. Supervisor Broglar, please.
Currently, the Fair Park Maintenance Staff is responsible for maintaining over fifteen billions in outdoor arenas and the grounds surrounding these facilities, covering over ninety acres. Specific daily needs include building maintenance and custodial services, fundamental repairs, comprehensive electrical services to buildings, snow removers, sharing other pedestrian walkway safety issues, event setup and takedown of being on call for emergency during events. At present, the Fair Park Maintenance Staff consists of one Fair Park Supervisor, one maintenance worker, two, three grounds workers each at a thousand hours a year, and one seasonal labor worker. In addition, there are two onsite caretakers, primarily for grounds care and supervising the campsites during the camping season. In 2010, due to budget constraints, one full-time maintenance worker two position was eliminated, and one part-time, non-benefit position, and one 1,000-work, non-benefit position was created. In 2011, one part-time, non-benefit position was eliminated to create one 1,000-hour grounds worker, non-benefit position. Recruitment and retention efforts have not been successful in the last few years for the 1,000-hour grounds worker, non-benefit position at the Fair Park. Therefore, the Fair Park Director and the County Administrator recommend eliminating two 1,000-hour ground worker positions and creating one full-time maintenance worker two position. These changes will provide consistent staffing levels needed to perform routine and preventative maintenance to buildings and grounds to assure the safety of citizens, visitors, employees. With the savings resulted from the elimination of positions and the vacancy of the County Fair and Park Events Director position, no tax levy is required for 2019. In 2020 and future years, the newly created maintenance two position will be sustained with increased revenues from events and sponsorships, as well as differences in budgeted salaries for the Director's position in 2019 and future years. On May 7, 2019, the Human Resource Committee reviewed the requests from the County Administrator and the County Fair and Park Events Director, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board to create one full-time Building Maintenance Worker Two position and eliminate two 1,000-hour grounds worker positions at Fair Park. Fiscal note: The cost of the Maintenance Worker Two position is budgeted for $62,463 annually for salary-infringed benefits, $55,482 for the remainder of the 2019 for salary and benefits. The savings with the elimination of two 1,000-hour ground worker positions is budgeted at $32,749 annually for salary-infringed benefits, $22,924 for the remainder of 2019 for salary and benefits. The Fair Park and County Fair and Park Event Director was vacant January through April with a budgeted savings of $37,540. Therefore, no tax levy is required for these positions. However, this is a budget amendment, county board requires two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board, twenty of the thirty members. I move for passage.
Moved in second to create one full-time Maintenance Worker Two position and eliminate two 1,000-hour grounds worker positions at the Fair Park. Roll call vote, please. Twenty votes are required for adoption. I need a battery.
We have thirty yes, zero no, zero absent.
Resolution is adopted, the budget is amended. Now also from the Human Resources Committee. A resolution transferring cases involving children in need of protection and services, termination of parental rights, and juvenile guardianships from the District Attorney's Office to the Corporation Counsel Office, and creating one Assistant Corporation Counsel position. Supervisor Broglar, please.
This is the salmon-colored sheet, not the one that was found in your original packet. The District Attorney Office represents the interests of the public in cases involving children in need of protection and services, CHIPS, termination of parental rights, TPR, and juvenile guardianships. Beginning in 2010, the District Attorney's Office started contracting with outside legal counsel to serve as a special prosecutor and to assist in prosecuting termination of parental rights cases. Due to the increasing number of children in need of services, the expansion of other services provided by the Human Services Department, and the increasing number of cases prosecuted by the District Attorney's Office, including the recently created Alcohol and Drug Treatment Courts, the Human Services Department considered alternatives to hiring outside legal counsel to represent its interest. Transferring certain duties from the District Attorney's Office to the Corporation Counsel Office will reduce the need for contracted legal services and allow the District Attorney's Office, which is understaffed by 2.4 attorneys, to allocate more resources to prosecuting criminal and other statutorily required cases, including juvenile cases under Chapter 948. As things currently are, cases referred by the Human Services Department are either referred to the District Attorney's Office, the Corporation Counsel Office, or contracted through outside legal counsel. This change would consolidate cases involving human services in the Corporation Counsel Office, allow for operational efficiencies, and would also be consistent with how Dodge County and other surrounding counties operate. Transferring duties to the Corporation Counsel Office requires the creation and funding of an attorney position in the Corporation Counsel Office. This additional position is also necessary for the Corporation Counsel's Office to properly represent the county in cases such as mental health commitments, guardianships, protective placements, and general corporation counsel work, which has been increasing every year. The Human Services Department, District Attorney's Office, and the Corporation Counsel Office worked together towards this transition and agreed that it is in the best interest of Jefferson County because it will allocate the resources necessary for each office to begin to meet the continually increasing needs of the county. Costs associated with adding an Assistant Corporation Counsel position are expected to be offset by cost savings from reducing the need for outside legal counsel, reducing the length of time that children reside in foster care pending termination of parental rights, and by grant funding. Furthermore, human services funds will be utilized in 2019 for initial startup expenses. The Human Services Board considered this proposal at its meeting on March 12, 2019, and supported moving forward the resolution to transfer designated Chapter 48 cases to the Corporation Counsel Office, but did not address adding an Assistant Corporation Counsel position to the Corporation Counsel Office. The Human Resource Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on May 9, 2019, and the Finance Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on May 9, 2019, and both committees recommended forwarding to the county board for approval. Fiscal note: Costs associated with hiring an attorney for the Corporation Counsel Office are estimated at $55,346 for the remainder of 2019, which will be funded through a budget transfer from Human Services budget account number mentioned, termination of parental rights legal fees to the Corporation Counsel Office. Therefore, annual costs are estimated at $109,465, to be adjusted for cost of living and annual step increases. Approximately thirty-eight percent of the costs associated with prosecuting termination of parental rights cases will be funded through a grant for the, through the Human Services Department and allocated to the Corporation Counsel Office. The remaining costs are expected to be offset by the cost savings from reducing the need for outside legal counsel and reducing the length of time that children reside in foster care pending termination of parental rights. This is a budget amendment, the county board approval requires two-thirds votes of the entire county board. I move for passage.
Moved in second to transfer cases involving children in need of protection and services, termination of parental rights, and juvenile guardianships from the District Attorney's Office to the Corporation Counsel Office, and creating one Assistant- Attorney's Office to the Corporation Council Office, and creating one Assistant Corporation Council position. Discussion. Supervisor Morris, please.
I have two questions. I just thought we should get the corporate counsel to comment on this. And then I have a second question.
Yes, the executive summary in the resolution that was just read was drafted in a way to cover the entire issue more as comprehensively as possible. I want to emphasize that I worked with the Human Services Director Kathy Colley, the District Attorney, as well as our County Administrator in drafting this resolution and creating the groundwork for transferring cases. This is a situation that has been agreed to by all parties. This will be a transition that's going to benefit everybody, and the work that would be referred to the Corporation Council Office from the District Attorney's Office will be significant. This isn't something that my office can simply add on to the existing workload. If you recall my annual report in April, I showed you the numbers of cases that my office handled for 2018. Compared that to 2017, 2016, maybe even 2015, and you could see how many cases my office has increased with handling, particularly with Chapter 51, mental commitments, guardianships, protective placements, all from the Human Services Department. And these cases that we're talking about here, CHIPS, TPRs, juvenile guardianships, those would also be from the Human Services Department coming to my office. So one of the things that I mentioned in the executive summary was that this would be a consolidation of cases in the Corporation Council Office. There'd be one office that would be handling more cases for the Human Services Office versus, as things stand right now, my office handles some cases, the District Attorney's Office handles other cases, and we have outside legal counsel handling cases as well for Human Services. So this is a step in the right direction by consolidating these cases in the Corporation Council Office.
Very good. Thank you so much. And then, just in case, people read sometimes termination of parental rights, and they get a little leery of that, and it is something that, obviously, we have to do. We're not necessarily making terminating parental rights easier. That happens based upon judicial standards, okay? So what we vote on here doesn't make it easier for any parent's rights to be terminated. This is just about operational efficiencies. Then, just so you understand, even in those cases, you can terminate a parent's right, but that does not mean you've terminated a relationship. And often, it's the case when rights are terminated, kids still relate to their mom and dad just because that's the way it is. Thank you so much.
Well, I will comment on what Supervisor Morris said regarding the not making it easier to terminate parental rights. I represented Human Services in my previous county, Portage County, where I went to court on multiple occasions, and I had a number of jury trials, and I didn't realize how difficult it was to terminate parental rights, even though you have the most egregious forms of abuse and neglect that you're presenting your case to a judge or jury. The law makes it difficult. The law will always make it difficult to terminate a parent's rights to their children. The opportunity that we have here is that we are able to process the cases that are pending more efficiently and quickly because we'll have greater staff to do so. And that's a benefit to everybody because the children that we're talking about here, if the rights aren't terminated to their parents, that means they're in foster care. They don't have a permanent placement, and that's a big concern of Human Services. The goal is to have the parental rights terminated, and at that point, the children can be placed for adoption, and they can have permanency. And that's always the goal, permanency. And this resolution will help and move that process forward more quickly as it should be.
Thank you. Further discussion. Okay, question before the Board is on transferring cases involving children in need of protection and services, termination of parental rights, and juvenile guardianships from the DA's Office to the Corporation Council Office, and creating one additional Assistant Corporation Council position. It's a budget amendment. We'll have a roll call vote. Twenty votes are required for adoption.
We have thirty yes, zero no, zero absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now, a resolution from the Human Resources Committee accepting grant funding through the Crisis Stabilization Innovation Incentive Award for long-term care and creating a full-time intake worker position at the Human Services Department. Supervisor Broglar, please.
Resolution 2019-20. Jefferson County Human Services was recently awarded a grant from the Crisis Stabilization Innovation Incentive Award for Long-Term Care LTC. The county will receive a grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand forty-one dollars to fund one full-time intake worker position in the Emergency Mental Health Division, including all overhead costs and IT costs. This one-time grant will provide needed services through December 31, 2020. Hereafter, the new intake worker position is anticipated to be fully funded by Medicaid and the purchase of service contract with managed care organizations. Otherwise, the position will be eliminated. As the frequency and severity of complex behavioral health needs in the long-term care population continue to rise, crisis intervention and stabilization services will require effective communication and collaboration between state-contracted and county systems in order to prevent and reduce admissions to psychiatric facilities for adults served by LTC programs and to prevent unnecessary psychiatric hospitalizations. These facilities are known as institution for mental disease. The Crisis Intervention Innovation Incentive Award promotes collaboration between county Human Services Departments and LTC stakeholders through improving the systems of care involved in supporting vulnerable Wisconsin residents who may be at risk of being admitted to an institution for mental disease, and to support local and regional efforts to reduce the frequency and duration of these stays for adults receiving Medicaid-funded LTC services. The Human Services has the support of law enforcement, hospital, and managed care organizations to collaboratively find a solution to reduce the number of admissions to institutions for mental disease by treating more people on an outpatient basis. Request from the Human Services Director was received by the Human Resources Committee on May 7, 2019, by the Finance Committee on May 9, 2019. Both Human Resources and Finance Committees recommend forwarding this resolution to the County Board to create one full-time intake worker position in Emergency Mental Health at the Human Services Department, and to accept the grant funding of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand forty-one dollars, of which eighty-five-thousand one hundred and fifty will be distributed in 2019. Fiscal note: The Crisis Stabilization Innovation Incentive Award for Long-Term Care Grant is for twenty months for a total of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand forty-one dollars. The intake worker position is budgeted for a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for twenty months for salary-infringed benefits; fifty-nine-thousand nine hundred and forty-five for the remainder of the 2019 for salary-infringed benefits, and is fully funded through the Crisis Stabilization Innovation Incentive Award for Long-Term Care Grant. Therefore, no tax levies required for this position. The remaining eighty-five-thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars of grant is budgeted for supervisory time, IT costs, and overhead and other program-related expenses for twenty months. The Jefferson County will receive eighty-five-thousand one hundred and fifty dollars of the two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand forty-one dollars in 2019. Please see the attached Budget Adjustment or Amendment Request Form for Proposed Amendment to the 2019 budget. This is a budget amendment. County Board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership. I move for passage.
Moved and seconded to accept grant funding through the Crisis Stabilization Innovative Incentive Award for Long-Term Care and creating a full-time intake worker position at the Human Services Department. Discussion. Twenty votes are required for adoption. Roll call, vote, please.
We have thirty yes, zero no, zero absent.
Resolution is adopted. We're about two-thirds of the way through the agenda. How you doing? You want to break, or you want to work through? Work through? You're a tough bunch. Way to go. Now we'll go to the Parks Committee. With a resolution authorizing Wisconsin Department of National Natural Resources Stewardship Program, Federal Recreational Trails Program, and Land and Water Conservation Fund grant applications and acceptance. Supervisor Teetz, please.
Resolution number 2019-21. Glacial River Trail, a fifty-two-mile bike path and route system, links communities along the Rock River and the heart of the Glacial Heritage Area of Dodge, Jefferson, and Rock Counties. The trail is frequently used by handicapped walkers, cyclists, runners, dog walkers of all ages during all seasons. A portion of the Glacial River Trail, approximately five hundred feet south of Lake Koshkano on the south of Fort Akerson, has been sinking since the expansion of the west side of State Highway 26 in 2014. Giles Engineering Associates performed soil borings and provided a geotechnical report regarding the ongoing sinking. Jefferson County has made several attempts to repair the trail. With more pronounced continued sinking, Jefferson County is now seeking assistance from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to aid with the cost to repair this section of the trail. This resolution authorizes the County Administrator to apply for, and if awarded, to accept grants, funds up to fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of repairing this section of Glacial River Trail. The Parks Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on May 6, 2019, and recommended forwarding to the County Board for approval. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Parks Department is authorized to seek funding from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resource Stewardship Program, the Federal Recreational Trail Program, and the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the repair of the Glacial River Trail. And if the grant funds are awarded, the County Administrator is authorized to accept said grants, sign the grant contracts, and perform all other duties necessary to comply with and fulfill the grant provisions. Excuse me. Fiscal note: If the county is awarded a stewardship grant as described, the Finance Director is authorized to amend the budget to increase capital improvement land by up to thirty thousand dollars, increase state aid by up to fifteen thousand, and decrease operating reserve by up to fifteen thousand. This budget's amendment requiring twenty out of thirty votes for the total membership of the County Board for passage. I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to authorize grant applications and acceptance. Discussion. Twenty votes are required for adoption. Roll call, vote, please.
We have thirty yes, zero no, zero absent.
Resolution is adopted. Also from the Parks Committee, a resolution authorizing Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Stewardship Program, Federal Recreational Trails Program, and Land and Water Conservation Fund grant applications and acceptance. Supervisor Teetz, please.
Resolution number 2019-22. Executive summary. Jefferson County Parks Department is seeking funds to upgrade a section of the trail from paved parking lot to an overlooked observation deck. The project is located at Dorothy Carnes Park in Rose Lake State Natural Area, north 3220 Radcliffe Road, Fort Akerson. The current gravel trail would be upgraded to an eight-foot paved trail, approximately four-hundred-and-sixty feet in length. The trail would be improve access to mobility-limited users and would be one-hundred-percent ADA compliant. The observation deck includes interpretive materials pertaining to wetlands, birds of Rose Lake, and may soon include a viewing telescope for the wildlife watching. The Parks Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on May 6, and recommended forwarding the County Board for approval. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Parks Department is authorized to seek funding from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Stewardship Program, the Federal Recreational Trail, and Land and Water Conservation Fund for upgrading the trail to Rose Lake. And if grants are awarded, the County Administrator is authorized to accept said grants, sign the grant contracts, and perform all other duties necessary to comply and fulfill the grant provisions. Fiscal note: If the county is awarded a stewardship grant as described above, the Finance Director is authorized to amend the budget to increase capital improvement land by up to fourteen-thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, increase state aid by up to seven thousand three hundred and eighty, and decrease operating reserve by seven thousand three hundred and eighty. This is a budget amendment requiring twenty of thirty affirmative votes of the total membership of the County Board for passage. This is a budget amendment requiring twenty out of thirty affirmative votes of the total membership of the County Board for passage. I move for resolution number 2019-22.
Moved and seconded to authorize this set of grant applications and acceptance. Discussion. Roll call, vote, please. Twenty required for adoption.
We have thirty yes, zero no, zero absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now to the Planning and Zoning Committee with a report on approval of petitions, followed by the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance. Supervisor Nass, please.
Report to the Honorable Members of Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee having considered petition to amend official zoning map of Jefferson County filed for public hearing held on March 14, 2019, April 18, 2019 as required by law pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Notice thereof having been given, may duly advise the wishes of town boards and persons in areas affected hereby makes the following recommendations. Approval of petitions as listed below dated the 29th day of March, 2019. Brain Blaine Paulson, Secretary. Ordinance number 2019...
Two.
Two. I move for the pass of this ordinance as printed.
Moved and seconded to amend the zoning ordinance as printed. Supervisor Canard, please.
I will abstain for potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. And Supervisor Mote, please.
Mr. Chairman, under A. 1 to A. 3, the fourth item, the address is incorrect.
Oh, that's right.
That should say Banker Road, not Kieseling Road.
Thank you. Good catch. We can handle that administratively. I don't think we need an amendment.
Corporation Council.
That's... You agree? Okay, good. All right. So with that change in the address, is there further discussion? All in favor of amending the zoning ordinance as printed with that technical change? Say aye.
Aye.
No, if you're opposed. The ordinance is amended. Now, appointment by the County Administrator. Supervisor... Mr. Weimeyer, please. We haven't elected yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I'm proud that we're bringing forward Phil and our Fair Park Director. She's a staff member who we've been working on in succession plan, and she was part of internal and external search as we looked, and she came all ahead of the pack. And I think the one thing our interview panel found is just the passion of what she feels for this organization and the fairground itself, and I think that's something that's going to carry out as she leads that organization to the next level. So with that being said, by virtue of authority vested me in 59.18, subparent 2B of the Wisconsin statute, I respectfully request confirmation of Amy Listel as the next Fair Park Director for Jefferson County.
Moved and seconded to confirm the appointment of Amy Listel as our next Fair Park Director. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The appointment is confirmed. Now, an appointment by the County Board Chair, subject to County Board confirmation. I, Jim Schrader, Chairman of the County Board of Supervisors, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is appointing authority for standing committees. Hereby appoint Samantha Lamoro, Health Representative, to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for an indeterminate term, and respectfully request Board confirmation. Moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The appointment is confirmed. Now, we have a proclamation, and Mr. Weimeyer, if you would do the honors, please, proclaiming May 16, 2019... May 16, 2019, as Jefferson County Peace Officers Memorial Day in Jefferson County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation 2019-4. Proclaiming May 16, 2019, as Jefferson County Peace Officers Memorial Day in Jefferson County. Whereas each year, Congress and the President of the United States designate May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of Jefferson County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Jefferson County, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifice of their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting citizens against violence and disorder, and by protecting innocent against deception and weak against oppression. And whereas the Jefferson County Board calls upon all the citizens of Jefferson County and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12 to 18, 2019, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observance in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an impenible and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And whereas the people, the men and women of our law enforcement community, unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas the Board calls upon all the citizens of Jefferson County to observe Thursday, May 16, 2019, as Jefferson County Peace Officers Memorial Day, and honor those law enforcement officers who through their congregantious deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, who have become disabled in performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Now therefore be resolved that Jefferson County Board proclaims May 16, 2019, as Jefferson County Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Moved and seconded to proclaim May 16, 2019, as Jefferson County Peace Officers Memorial Day in Jefferson County. Discussion. And there is a ceremony in conjunction with this day. Mr. Weimeyer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This Thursday, May 16, at 11 o'clock, out by the statue, will be our usual memorial service. If it is raining, it'll be at the Activity Center at the Fair Grounds.
Thank you. And having attended past ceremonies, they typically have a moving speaker. Definitely recommend attending. Discussion on the proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So proclaimed. Public comment of a general nature? Would any member of the public wish to address the Board at this time? Announcements. Supervisor Brogler.
I believe our next meeting is June 11, not the 9. Just a little block down here.
Can we confirm that? Okay. It would be June 11, as usual, the second Tuesday of the month. Okay. The Chair has an announcement. Please, before you leave tonight, check your mailbox. Some of them are getting pretty jammed up. Any other announcements? Moving and seconded to adjourn, is there any objection? We're adjourned. Thank you.